Yes. I want to thank everybody for coming. This is the Prattville Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, could you please call roll?
Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Bowles, Chairman Smith,
Here.
Vice Chair Gardner,
Here.
Chief Johnson,
Here.
Ms. Carpenter,
Here.
Mr. Hyman,
Here.
Mr. McOllie, and Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Okay. Um, I guess we will go to the first thing that was held on 3/19, and then held again on 4/16, and then 5/21. And it's the preliminary plat, Oak Creek plat number three. Do you have anything you want to tell us, or you want them to tell us, or what you want to do?
I'll start, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
As you stated, this item has been held three times. First time at the commission's prerogative. The second two times at the agreement of the applicant. You recall, the major issue was water pressure, and whether or not there was adequate pressure to add these additional loop streets north of... Sorry, I just lost the name of the street. They're in Oak Creek subdivision, north of Live Oak Drive. Yeah, Dunvegan Lane, but it is basically the streets that run north of Live Oak. If you recall, that runs east to west, connecting Upper Kingston with Court Street. Spoke with the Water Board earlier this week. They believe that they're in a position to increase the pressure and put adequate flow and pressure in that subdivision. However, they're not in a position to do it at this time. They are working towards that. Mr. Gillen may have something different on that, but...
Well, do they have an estimate of when they will do that?
Mr. Buckner could not, Superintendent of the Water Board, Buddy Buckner could not give me an idea of when that would take place.
Okay.
But I believe they, when they initially started this conversation, they believed it would be a simple matter. It has turned out to be a little more complicated.
Okay. Mr. Gillen?
I agree with Mr. Duke and everything we're talking about. They have actually extended a water line across the road up there next to Matt Gray Park. We've located a location on Matt Close property to install a vault for a pressure-reducing valve, so they can relocate it and build the pressure up in that area. I haven't gotten, like Joel says, when this will happen, but we're comfortable with holding this a little bit longer, so maybe this could fall in place.
Okay.
We would hope that you'd help us hold it, so that we wouldn't lose this.
All right, do we need to put a date on the hold, or do we just want to just say, we'll revisit it at a later date?
If it's agreeable with the applicant, I would say bring it back, revisit it in August, maybe?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody would make a motion to bring it back up at the August meeting, and that that holding is being done with consent of the applicant. Those two things need to be in whatever motion is made.
Somebody want to make the motion?
I shall move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Signify by raising your right hand. Oppose by sign. All right, I believe that passes, and we will see you in August. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is zoning of M1 Light Industrial Horace Davis property, County Road 4 at Jensen Road. That also was held from 5/21, and the petitioner has asked that we hold that again. However, there are some people here that wish to speak on this. We did have a public meeting at the last meeting, but I am open to allowing them to speak. Councilman Wood, would you like to be the first one to speak on this matter? Okay, that'd be fine. If Ms. Tanzania Johnson wishes... I have Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Carroll, and Mr. Reverend Fox. And I do need to sign in any of those people that wish to come and speak. But those are the ones that did ask to speak, and we would love to hear from them.
Hi. I'm Tanzania Johnson, and I know I spoke last time to some of you. And since that particular time, of course, I've looked at other things and talked to some of my friends and family that live in that community. And I would just like to start my conversation off by quoting a little theme out of one of my favorite movies. It's a British movie, and the little theme is "Let Right Be Done." And that's all that we're asking for in our community. We're not, we do not have anything against the property owners trying to do something with their property for their economic advantage. What we are concerned about is being displaced because of that same right of their, to have that economic advantage for themselves. Our community is an old community, and most people who are living there or have lived there have lived there for years. We've seen several things go on in our community over the past six, seven, eight decades that we really had little to no say-so in. But we want to be very vocal about this in a respectful way, because we're concerned about what the environment's going to be like if this is zoned properly. We're concerned about, is it still going to be quiet? Is it still going to be feasible for us to get around easily without excess traffic? We're concerned about those things. We're concerned about our health afterwards. Light industrial, regardless whether it's light industrial, heavy industrial, there's still some concerns about, I guess, air pollution. So we're concerned about those things. We want to be able to still have the zoning work around our community, if possible. And not so much our community has to work around your rezoning, or the rezoning of this property. So we're concerned about all those things that's going to affect us, with no disrespect for the property owners. But we just want the zoning board to keep in mind that there is a viable community there, and we're concerned about any type of change that's going to affect us to our detriment. Again, it's not the problem of development, it's the problem of displacement of us, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So if you would consider that, and if you would let right be done, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Might, I'd just like to compliment her on her behavior, the way she's handled this. She did an excellent job, and really do appreciate your approach.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I've got Mr. Wood, and certainly if you wanted the Reverend to come before you. Yes, sir. Absolutely, Mr. Wood. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Reverend? Reverend, if you'd sign in for us, I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Reverend Freddie Fox, pastor of Spring Hill Amishan Church, where the property is across the street from the church and from the community. And my concern is two things. One is the impact that the zoning would have on the community, because it could have a negative effect as an M1 on the community in terms of the community, as you well know, some of you may not know as well as others. But the community is blocked in by industry on basically three sides. And so there's no possible growth-type element there that the community can expand, in terms of that. The other part that we look at is the Jensen Road runs right straight through the community. And industry will bring more traffic. It's going to bring more traffic in terms of that, and what kind of impact that's going to have on the traffic load that's already there. You know, so those are concerns that we have as a community. We just purchased property across the street to build a church, and you know, what the impact going to be on our plans to build, you know, a church that across the street. So there are a lot of unknown variables in terms of what the owners plan to do with the property, how they plan to develop the property, what impact that's going to have on the community. The other, I heard, you know, well, industry going to bring jobs. Well, that may be true, but who would benefit from that? The people in the community don't necessarily have to benefit from jobs being brought in. You know, so what is in the plan that would address that even in terms of maybe them being hired as terms of laborers while the construction is being going on? Something that would let the community know that it's not neglected, that it's some concern have been given to what is going to happen with that property.
Yes.
So these are real concerns. There are concerns of ours, there are concerns of the community, you know, there are concerns that need to be addressed before, you know, you go forth with that. Because once you do it, I don't think y'all are going to reverse, you know, what you've done. So we look at the process. If the process is one that consider all things in that in terms of what negative or positive impact that the community will impact, mean what happened there. See, because, you know, after it's done, it's just like Jensen Road. After we put through there, there was no correcting that, you know, not at all. So a lot of development can, some development could go into that property that would enhance the community. You know, but right now, there's no indication. We have not heard anything, we have not seen anything to say that that's going to be any positive. We, what we sense is that, you know, it's going to be zone M1. Nobody know what is going to be the impact. Nobody know what the owner's actually intent is. So we need to know more. More information is needed before decision. You know, because once the decision made, like I say, reversing that becomes something that very seldom happens.
That's what, and we did have a meeting with them earlier this week, and believe that was what was relayed in that meeting, and that's why it was going to be held and brought back up later. And it's not going to be something that's going to be voted on now, is that they are going to examine all of that, and they're going to make a decision. And your feelings will be well noted. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Reverend. And Beverly Carroll also asked to speak, Mr. Wood. If she's here, if she wants to speak, or if you want to go ahead, Ms. Councilman. You didn't want to go last, but I was going to let her speak, but... Yeah, absolutely. If you come on, and I wanted to let you go last. Absolutely. Councilman, I was going to allow you to go last, if that's what you wanted to do. Sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Kimberly Pickett, and I was born and raised in Spring Hill community. And I'm concerned, I heard the other speak, but my great concern is about our kids with the rezoning and bringing in something new and bringing in new traffic. Spring Hill is a family community. We have kids running around, especially during the summer, pretty much all day long. So my concern is bringing something in that is going to help the community, not bringing so much traffic to the community to affect our kids. Because we have the Boys and Girls Club in the community, we also have the park. So I'm really just big on our kids, because they are our future. Bringing in other, I don't know what they're going to bring in, because no one has told us anything. But if bringing in other plants, another plant or something like that, I don't feel that would be the wisest thing to do in Spring Hill. Because like Reverend Fox stated, it is already boxed in. Bringing in another road that's enhancing more traffic, I just feel, and I hope and I pray that when the decision is made, that we really think about our kids and our elders. Because we do have people that have been there all their life. Just, you know, the traffic, the noise, just all of that is going to affect our kids and our elders. So before any decision be made, like Reverend Fox stated, we want, we hope that y'all will give us a lot of information. And I hope that our voice will be heard, and we're not trying to be difficult against anyone. We just, because in the past, I'm young, but in the past, Spring Hill has been treated kind of badly with stuff just being put there, and we didn't have a say-so, or no one reached out to us to let us know, hey, this is what's going on, and y'all do have a voice.
Yes.
At this time, I feel like we have been reached out and say, hey, y'all do have a voice. If you've got concerns, you have a chance to come and present it. So I thank y'all for allowing us to come and express ourselves.
Yes, sir.
But I'm just praying that when the decision is made, it's a decision that's going to help our community. Because we are, we got odds against us already. You know, we got a lot of things against us already, so we don't need nothing else to stomp us on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Chairman Smith. Is this all?
I believe it is, yes, sir. We can hear you, sir.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you all also for coming, and thank you all, again, Mr. Smith, for aligning them and myself to opportunity. Try not to be repetitive. I'm here, I'm representing the community, and I'm representing the city of Prattville. Because what you do will ultimately come before the city council.
Right.
And because of what you do, it was not maybe two weeks ago that I called it an annexation workshop. Because this issue in the Spring Hill community is not the only issue that you all will be dealing with, or that we will be dealing with, concerning annexation of property, especially outside of the Senate limits, and that want to be annexed, annexed in, and have a M1 or L4, whatever label they want to have on it. So we've had a work session on that, and the work session was, in my mind, consensus was, we have a preliminary map drawn that we look at to try to determine if this is going to be good or positive. And most of the things we've looked at, it will be. But based on what is happening here, we're talking about 230 acres at one time to be approved for M1, and we have no idea. I'm totally against a mass rezoning of that magnitude, especially in this community. It's a family-oriented community. Like I say, it's been disturbed many times. I'm not against M1. M1 is part of a development plan that was done five, maybe 10 years ago. I'm aware of that. But I'm against a blanket, 230 acres, without knowing exactly what those 230 acres will consist of. And I think that is the magnitude of the concerns of the constituents there. Because once you give it out, they have it. I would much rather see, if you're going to do annexation and rezoning of the whole 230 acres, put an FAR label on it, if you're going to do the whole thing. But if not, let them come before you and have some type of plan that the community can see, where the first 50 acres of M1, this is what we're going to do. The city can oblige us, because there are some things that the city may have to do as far as sewer and other type of amenities that really don't go all the way out there right now. So I think it's very premature to do that on such a large scale.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wood, they are, and that was one thing that when we spoke to them on, earlier this week, it was Tuesday, that they, we had discussed with them coming back to us with another proposal, and not the whole thing being M1. And, but that is something that we will definitely consider, and that they do need to consider as well.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'm sure the community appreciate that. That gives you all opportunity, that gives me an opportunity, and that gives the city council opportunity to look at what is happening on a smaller segment of land, and how much city services that we're going to have to abide, you know, provide also. So we thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
And again, thank you for your time. I understand this may be out of the ordinary, but we appreciate it. I've been up there before.
Yes, sir.
So you all do good work on the planning commission.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Thank you, Councilman. Stephen, would you like to speak, or just say anything on this issue? If you... Yes, sir. Yes. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate the committee meeting with us two days ago.
Yes, sir.
It's good to see you again. I thought we had a good conversation, and you touched on a lot of it, Mr. Smith, with the group that's here today. We're going to get back, we have a, I'm sure you're going to cover this later, but we've got a committee, another committee meeting July the 7th.
Okay.
We're going to get back together and bring in a sketch plan drawing that we all agreed to,
Okay.
that we'd go put together for you, and come back together and sit down and talk with you again.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duke, would you like to say anything at this time?
The only thing I was going to mention is that, and I think you basically covered it in several different ways, the committee meeting that was held
Yes.
on the, on Tuesday, on the 16th. Report that to the record.
If you'd like, I can talk, but you're doing a good job of reviewing what we talked about, so if you want to go ahead and let the whole council or the commission know what happened.
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. And I'm, again, like everybody else has spoken, has had the microphone this afternoon. I'm going to try to be, key from being repetitive. The primary issue that was brought up is that there were concerns about the impact of the entire piece going M1 at this point. Understanding that there would be a subdivision of property at some point, it's unlikely that all 230 acres, especially divided by Jensen Road, or a piece of it dividing off, is divided off by Jensen Road. It's unlikely all of that would go for development at one time, so there would be some subdivision. I believe it was the committee's consensus that they come back with some idea about how roads might be run through the property, also looking at, especially the corner of Jensen Road and County Road 4, how that presents back to the neighborhood. What would be an alternative land use, or some possible land uses for that corner, rather than all of the property being M1. So I believe it was a consensus during the committee meeting that they'd be allowed to, that this be held, and they'd be allowed to come back and meet with you all before the July meeting.
We did have to schedule another time to meet with them in July. They did ask for this to be held. Is there any questions on this, or, yes, sir? You want to hold?
I mean, if there, yes, I do have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and help me through the process there.
Right.
Okay, is this comes, is this being brought up like it is originally? All the surrounding property owners were notified?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay. Now, if this is held, one month, two months, whatever it might happen to be, what mechanism is in place today for them to be re-notified? That there will be another vote or a hearing? So that's one of my concerns about us holding this, is the fact that the citizens out here of this, of this community will not be properly, will not have that proper notification if we hold it. Now, I think also the rules are, if it gets voted down today, it has to be, and help me out with this one, it has to be held for 365 days unless there's a significant change?
Mr. Mayor, what, and that, that rule about, let me back up, I answered it a different way. At some point on a rezoning request, the planning commission has to push forward a recommendation to the city council. So a vote by the planning commission, up or down, you know, for it, against it, or for it with modifications, does not end the process. A rezoning has to go to the city council. Now, the applicant can withdraw it at any time, but the planning commission does not have that option of sitting on it permanently. And so, like I said, if the planning commission votes it down, that's not the end of the story. That is really just a negative recommendation that gets passed on to the city council. So to your point about notification, that's the reason I would recommend that if there's any type of tabling, that it be date-specific. Okay, that it's not just a, hold it indefinitely until the applicant comes back, that it will be revisited. If there is a significant change, then it will have to go back through a public hearing process. If it is a minor change, and what that really is, that's hard to say. But if there's a really, it's not a very much a material change, if it's just looking at street network, or, it's hard to say at this point what that would be. There would, there may not have to be another public hearing. And certainly, there would always be another public hearing before the city council. Okay? No matter what happens here, there's going to be another public hearing before the city council. So this is not the last shot at whatever. I think it is perfectly acceptable for the, for the, for the planning commission to hold it with a date specific that it comes up again in July. And really, it's at that point, it's really discussion. If there is a major change, then I'm going to recommend that it go back for another public hearing before this body, just so that everybody gets a chance to talk about it. And then there's also no question procedurally that it was done correctly. But it has to come out of the planning commission. It has to go forward in some fashion unless the applicant withdraws the petition.
Well, and you're 100% right. This is a recommendation to the city council.
Yes, sir.
But if anything happens here, it's going to, in my opinion, has to be a significant change.
And it possibly will be. If, once we met with them and they got ideas, they are, they were looking at making some, several changes, and when we got back together, they were going to present those changes. And I, I don't have a problem with people speaking again at the next meeting if they have any questions or concerns at that time as well. But I'll give them the opportunity to come back to us and show us what they want to do.
If I'm right, Mr. Chair, I would say that it's probably best to kind of see what, because we're all talking in the abstract.
Right.
It's kind of best to see what, what comes back. I mean, I hate to say it, but the applicant could come back and say, look, we're not making any changes. We'd like to just to move forward.
Yeah.
I don't think that's the case.
Right.
I would wait and see where you end up at your next meeting. You're probably going to be in a position where you say, okay, let's table it again and hold another public hearing, at which point you would send that back out. Your other option is to... Your other option is to adopt it in some fashion or make a recommendation and push it forward to the city council. So, it looks like you have a recommendation coming from the committee to, to, to table it. Excuse me, I used that.
Yes.
Hold it and then let them come back with some other options. And then, once you have that in hand, as a body, you're either gonna send it back to committee or you're gonna send it out for a public hearing is what it sounds like.
Well, I do want some, um, guarantees that our citizens here will be contacted, um, through, through mails. And then my recommendation too, if there's any emails available, please send those in to, to the planning commission here, so that way we can contact you. But also, we need to make certain we do get letters out to them informing them, reminding them of the upcoming meeting. And if we, if I'm guaranteed that we will have, allow them time to speak and review the process, then I'm, I'm good with holding it.
Alright. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of holding, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Question before you go on that, if you don't mind, I, and I apologize for.
Yeah, go ahead. Or is he wanting to have a public hearing before the next meeting or, or?
No, I, and if it's okay, I, I'm just gonna make the statement that, yeah, we, we have a, a state, um, required method of, of notification and we also have a, one set by your bylaws. Beyond that, I, I'd need some, some pretty specific instruction about how we need to do that. If there's, if we're setting up a registry of folks that wanna know, we need to know that. We still wanna get in a position where somebody can make a case that they were not notified even though they thought they were going to be. Okay, we, um, so if.
Do you wanna?
I'll try to, I'll try to get that set up with Mr. Wood, with the mayor in some fashion.
Okay.
Particular case, but beyond that, uh, we don't wanna get ourselves in a situation where folks thought they were gonna be notified in a certain way and, and we're not.
Well, we could have our subcommittee meeting, then set it up for another public hearing? And not have it on the next agenda or hold it till we have another public hearing after we have our subcommittee meeting? Would that work?
Procedurally, I, I would go ahead and just schedule it for your next, if, if you're holding it to the next meeting, you're having a subcommittee meeting between these two meetings. And you'll have something to report from the committee and that'll give you, uh, somewhere to go at the next meeting. Which sounds, which really sounds to me like it's gonna be another public hearing or that's what.
Okay.
May be requested.
At, at, at that meeting, we could request a public hearing and I'll be, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Alright.
We've, uh, hold it till the next meeting.
Oh, raise your right hand. Thank you. Alright, so, uh, those opposed, like sign, we, we had any that were not? Okay, um, those that, the subcommittee meeting, Mr. Duke, you are going to allow everyone to know when that is? Or what do we normally, is that a public, that is a public notice or is that, we go ahead and tell them?
We, we post that public notice, but we'll make sure we get it out to everybody that.
It is on the seventh of July right now is what we.
That's when y'all said, it's seventh of July at, uh, four o'clock.
Four o'clock across the street and.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
If more folks show up, we will move over here or find a place to talk about it. But seven, seven, seven at four. Alright, thank you. We will go on down to the next thing. It is a new, it is new business. It is, uh, Oaks of Buena Vista, plat five. This is a public hearing. Is somebody here to speak for or against or tell us what's, what's go, you can tell us what's going on and then I'll see if there's anybody here to talk to us.
Thank you, I'm Greg Gillen, Larry Speaks and Associates. And we are seeking approval, preliminary plat approval of, uh, the Oaks of Buena Vista plat number five.
Okay.
This is plat number one, the main ballpark coming out right through to this point. Plat number four has already been built. This is four A, four B at this point. We're trying to bring in number five, which actually gives us a little bit of.
Thank you. Let me see if anybody would like to speak. This is a public hearing. The public are welcome to come talk to us. Is there anybody out there that wants to talk? We are here to listen. Alright, the public hearing is hereby closed. Uh, Mr. Duke, I think Mr. Gillen did a good job of explaining it. Would you like to say anything? We go, we gotta read it in, don't we? Thank you for, for helping me there. Um, would you like to read it in?
Resolution, preliminary plat, the Oaks of Buena Vista plat number five, June eighteenth, twenty fifteen. Whereas the Oaks of Buena Vista LLC is the owner of the Oaks of Buena Vista plat five. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits off Buena Vista Boulevard. And whereas the sketch plan for the proposed development was approved January fifth, two thousand and six. And whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard on June eighteenth, twenty fifteen. And whereas the required city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed preliminary plat. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the preliminary plat of the Oaks of Buena Vista plat number five.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Alright, now, Mr. Duke.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have, um, just some, some minor items that we, we specifically figured out by Gillen. Um, and a, a resubmission, they are, um, usual that we get at a preliminary plat. Uh, just some further details as far as matching the sketch plan and matching the overall design for the subdivision. Um, certainly recommend approval and I think Chief Johnson probably would agree with me. It's nice to have a looped street.
Yeah, absolutely.
At the top here, so, uh, this is, um, the subdivision is, is, was planned out a while back. It's not, uh, where we'd like to do it today, but it still matches the sketch plan that was approved back in oh six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Duke? Are there any questions for Mr. Gillen? Any questions from there? Alright, then let's call a question, if that's all. All in favor of the sketch plan as it is written? Raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Let's move on. Alright, we have a public hearing for the same. I guess I combined those two without realizing it, but.
No, this is plat six.
Yeah, plat six. I don't believe there's anybody here to speak, so the public hearing is hereby closed. Mr. Gillen, are, you wanna read it in? Alright, let's read it in.
This is, uh.
Oh, hang on one sec, okay, you wanna go ahead? We're gonna read it in, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead and read it in.
Preliminary plat, the Oaks of Buena Vista plat number six, June eighteenth, twenty fifteen. Whereas the Oaks of Buena Vista LLC is the owner of Boinks, Oaks of Buena Vista plat number six. And whereas the proposed development is located outside the city limits off Buena Vista Boulevard. And whereas the sketch plan for the proposed development was approved on January fifth, twen, two thousand and six. And whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard on June eighteen, twenty fifteen. And whereas the required city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed preliminary plat. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the preliminary plat of the Oaks of Buena Vista plat number six.
Thank you for reading that one. Alright, thank you. Second. Alright, now, Mr. Gillen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Our next, uh, proposed development is the extension of the Pelasac Street on Vintage Way.
Okay.
And, uh, the owner has purchased this property and was in the process of annexation and rezoning. And the, the annexation process is taking some time, so, you know, again, we're just trying to put it, I think it's twelve lots. And, uh, we're seeking approval and, uh, I'm sure it's gonna be contingent on annexation or approval from the city council to be allowed to connect it to sewer is what we'd like, if we could get that. I don't know how long the annexation process is gonna take, but, uh, usually, things like this, the council will consider on occasion to allow us to connect it to sewer. But that would be a council decision if the annexation drags out.
That makes that street how long?
Not too long.
Okay.
But it is approximately seven hundred feet, six to seven hundred feet.
Okay. And now it's another three hundred feet or two hundred feet or?
That would be the total.
Oh, total is seven hundred feet.
I did say a proximal.
Proximal, I, I, I'm not holding it to it, right. Is there any other questions for Mr. Gillen? Any question, uh, Mr. Duke?
Sure. And I'm gonna touch on what Mr. Gillen did not, is that this, this property was, was held originally by the, the folks that sold the larger piece. And, uh, I guess they've decided to sell it at this point, but I understand that, but I guess that's why you're not looking at this piece having been annexed. This whole, this is the, the, uh, house that went with the original piece of property. It was out as well as this other Travis Oil piece here. They requested annexation, which then would lead to a, a, a zoning hearing as well. I can't really tell you when annexation will take place based on what I'm hearing from the city council at this point. As far as the subdivision is concerned, it meets, uh, city guidelines. The design is appropriate. So there's really no issue from a subdivision standpoint. It's a matter of timing. As Mr. Gillen stated, he, he does not have the ability to sewer this property, uh, without being in the city limits or getting approval from the city council. So any approval you give today would have to be contingent upon, uh, those items. So primarily sewer. Uh, th- these lots cannot exist at this size on subject tape, under state guidelines. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Will you?
Mr. Duke, what? Why is the two R threes involved with the R five? Why, uh?
Sorry, I wanna get away from the mic, because, um, a certain constituent will call and say she couldn't hear me, so, um, basically, we have R five and R three, which are both single-family, uh, designations, Mr. Nelson. Uh, you're looking at the different width in the, of the lot, uh, different product. Uh, you see that, um, you've seen it in River Chase North, you've seen it in Brookstone. Uh, we've seen different mixture of, of different products throughout. And this subdivision started out with some R three and R five in the front.
Yeah.
R three, which originally started out with R three on the, the west side as well, but, uh, y'all saw fit to recommend and the council approved a rezoning to R five for the rest of that last year. So, uh, all of these are single-family. It's really a matter of how, how dense the, the allocation. And this little street is already R five, a continuation of that.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we need to make a formal amendment to have it contingent?
Oh, yes, ma'am, absolutely. Um, anything that you approve today would have to be, I would ask that you amend it to state specifically what you're, what you're approving.
So we approve it contingent on the, the city allowing him to tap into the sewer system?
Right, and, you're, you're.
And, and or annexation.
Right, either, either contingency basically stops this process right here until one of those is completed. They, they can complete the annexation or they can go ask for, for sewer to be extended. But as it stands right now, uh, this subdivision does not go forward, does not get constructed until one of those two things happens.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I make a motion that we, uh, have it contingent on it being annexed because of the issues that we could potentially have. If that's in the county and not in the city, um, public safety, police fire, and so many others. So I think the annexation would be the.
And, and the annex, we do them as separate.
Sir?
Oh, yeah. I'm just saying, do we need to have it, that amendment with the sewer system or that on standalone?
I, I believe the mayor's specific amendment was that it just, that it'd be only.
Only the annexation?
Into the city.
And I second.
And I second, alright, all in favor of that motion? The amendment? Okay. Opposed, like sign? So that is the amendment on the resolution. Now we will vote on the.
The amended resolution.
The amended resolution. Do we need to amend it any other fashion or just that solves both of those problems?
Let me just, we're, we're voting to, on the amended resolution, which is to approve this contingent upon city annexation, which is the amendment we just passed.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, then let's vote on the motion with the amended resolution. All in favor? Right hand? Opposed, like sign? Now, Mr. Garner, will you read in the next thing, which is the same thing that we just did? Is it not?
I thought we had a good Buena Vista reader.
Yeah.
Resolution final plat, the Oak and Buena Vista plat four B, June eighteenth, twenty fifteen. Whereas the Oak Buena Vista LLC is, is the owner of the Oak Buena Vista plat four B. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limit of, off of Buena Vista Boulevard. And whereas the sketch plan for the proposed development was approved January fifth, two thousand and six. And whereas the preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved on June nineteenth, twenty fourteen. And whereas the required city department has reviewed and commented on the proposed final plat. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby give its favorable review of the final plat of the Oak Buena Vista plat number four. I so moved, Mr. Garner.
Thank you, it's a second. Oh, thank you. Alright, um, would, go ahead, Mr. Gillen, you're right there behind us there.
Lot Joel might take care of it.
Yeah. What we got, that?
Alright, we are in for final plat approval of plat four B, which is located right here. We brought four eighteen, you know, about.
Hmm.
Three, four months ago.
Right.
About built out, I think there might be two lots left without slumming. Yeah, something in, in that line.
Okay.
And, uh,
I remember.
At this point, we're just seeking for final plat approval of these lot.
Okay. Mr. Gillen?
Everything's in order, streets are paved.
Yeah, I've been, I've been back there, it looks good.
Yeah, the, the subdivision is substantially complete. We agree with the request for, for plating.
Okay. Any questions? Concerned? Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by the right hand? Opposed, like sign? Now, our next thing is, um, miscellaneous. Mr. Duke, what do you have for us? Thank you.
Y'all may recall that, uh, about this time last year, I spoke to you about, um, a study that really is a follow-on to your comprehensive plan. The city applied for and received a, a community development block grant from the state to do a neighborhood revitalization plan or a neighborhood-specific study for the Martin Luther King Drive area. Originally started out calling it College Heights and Martin Luther King, but as, as large as the area is, we, we just kinda ended up just calling it Martin Luther King Drive, uh, project. This is the, uh, the finished plan. It is not absolutely complete at this point. There's a steer, steering committee that's reviewing it as well as, uh, what I'm about to ask you to do is to review it. Uh, what I would like to do is, uh, be prepared at your next meeting to set this up as an amendment to your, to your ma, to the city's master plan. Y'all, been on the commission for a long time, know that, uh, what that requires is a, is a public hearing first and, um, requires, uh, basically a, a tooth, um, a vote of at least six members of this, uh, body to approve it. Excuse me. Again, this is, uh, this is a basically the complete study. Now, that does not mean this has to be adopted, has completed as part of your master plan. So, uh, I wanted to make sure y'all have a, a chance. So, I wanted to make sure y'all have a, a chance to review it, absolutely, a chance to review it, a chance to ask questions before it's put out for public comment. This would be really in addition to what's already been adopted as the city's master plan. Just to talk a little bit about this, this is a project that involved a good bit of inventory and study, and then involved work with a steering committee, and then one public meeting held at the North Highland Community Center, which was well-attended. Have some nice visuals from that. You can see that folks were given options about what they would like to see in that community, looking at connectivity, about the Martin Luther King Corridor, about housing, about use of city property, and the park. You might can tell by the cover that the area around North Highland Park and the North Highland Community Center ended up being kind of a focal point, so I think there's, there are good recommendations in this study, and options for the city to look at down the road. So, again, this is just providing it to you. Be glad answering questions at this point. Hope you'll have a chance to read it, study it a little bit, ask a lot more questions.
I'll do so. Is there any questions for Mr. Duke at this time? Yes, ma'am.
A question, you said before, it is circulated or whatever, what are the plans to circulate it?
Circulation first is to this body, and secondly to, well, not secondly, concurrently to the, the steering committee that was involved with it. If there are major changes that need to be made, the consultant is available to make those adjustments. Keep in mind, though, it is a, it is a plan, it's a concept. It is not an app, it's not a zoning map, it's not, these are absolutely required changes. The, just like your entire master plan, it is what you would like to see, possibilities. Give you an example. We're talking about an area in Spring Hill that is shown in the master plan as being all industry. That's not the way the zoning map's going to end up, okay? Because when you get down to specific pieces of property, you end up with much better detail, much more guidance. And, and that's, if you want to think about it, this is a forty thousand foot look at this area. Your master plan for the city was even higher than that, and so as you work down to individual pieces of property, you get more detail. But this, this step here, where you look at an area in total and how it works together, is a very important step. Just to give you an example, we're using some of this and some of the things that came out of this study to apply for some infrastructure grants for, for this area. There's some work you'll see described in here around the junior high school to improve traffic flow, that will be a part of it. I think that the community is rather excited about the possibility of some streetscape and sidewalk, sidewalk changes on Martin Luther King Drive. So, I think it's a very productive process. Mr. Gardner was a part of the steering committee. Again, y'all, y'all take it a few days, weeks to take a look at it, give me a call if you have a major question. And then if, if, if y'all are ready, then it would be appropriate at the next meeting to make a motion to set a public hearing, to get public response, you know, put it out for public comment and response before you adopt it as a, as part of the master plan.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Gillen.
What was your attendance at the meeting at the North Highland Recreation Center that night?
I, I would say about twenty-five, if you, if you discounted the folks that had to be there, like, I was there, the mayor was there.
I mean, community attendance actually.
Community attendance is about twenty-five, and it was, it was a good group. They were not, they're not bashful about sharing, so, and they were, you know, it was a good exercise, and we gave them a chance to vote, and gave them play money and asked them to vote for their favorite project, so.
Okay, I saw the money on there, I was wondering what that was. Yeah. Is there any other questions, concerns, Mr. Duke on this? Mr. Duke, is there anything else that you would like to bring before the commission? Thank you. Meeting adjourned? There you go, thank you.